Assuming we are live, welcome to everyone to the regular meeting of council for Monday, September 28. I'd like to call the meeting to order as of 3:00 PM. I'm looking for a adoption of the agenda, Council McMillan. Be it resolved that council adopt the agenda of the regular meeting for council September 28th as presented.
I'll give you that motion.
Thank you. And councillor Kinghorn, if you could, please give me a resolution that we adopt the regular meeting of council minutes for September 14th as presented.
Happy to do that, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, and we will do our voting by consensus, so just indicate. Otherwise, councillor Moore, you look like you have something. No, perfect. Are there public comments, Chris?
Mayor, acting mayor, Kui, I don't have any public comments received today, but Emma Grady, our legislative services assistant, is on the line as well, so Emma, if there are any, could you please let us know?
Sorry about that, Emma.
No worries, I haven't received any so far.
Perfect, thank you. The strategic priorities chart is part of the agenda and more is information, so for people to stay kind of keep apprised of what our priorities are at this time. So moving on to bylaw 4577-2020, second and third readings, is someone presenting on this?
I am. For Cara, so on September 14th, 2020, a public hearing was held for bylaw 4577-2020, being the public notification bylaw. No feedback was received at the public hearing, therefore, you're recommending second and third reading for the public notification bylaw, and if adopted, staff will proceed with notifying the public on where notices will be located. Do we have any questions?
I think this is pretty straightforward, and we've had a conversation essentially just updating the bylaws so we can better communicate public notifications, you know, including more digital platforms and social media, so just beyond the standard means of communication that we previously used. So seeing no further questions, no questions, I would ask councillor Nychik to... I'm going to pull a Craig and just mutter through all of this, that council get, let's do, give second reading to bylaw 4577-2020 with public notification bylaw.
Be happy to give you that motion.
And, and that council give third and final reading to bylaws 4577-2020, being that public notification bylaw.
Sure, I'll give you that motion too.
Thank you, they were together, so that was my reading, so.
Point of order, madam chairman, we didn't vote.
I was just looking at you.
On the second, pardon?
Okay, nope. Go ahead, Don.
Oh, we just have to take a vote on the second reading to make sure that it goes.
Passes unanimously, right? Okay, a vote on the second reading? By consensus, perfect. And third, and second, third and final reading? Perfect, carried, thank you. We'll get it done. First reading, electronic communications bylaw, who is speaking to this? Am I again?
Yes, that's me.
Locations on my screen.
Sorry, okay, I am here to present the proposed bylaw 4580-2020, being the electronic communications bylaw. The ability for the town to pass a bylaw like this came through Bill 25, the Red Tape Reduction Act, which added a section to the municipal government act that permitted municipalities to send out assessment notices, tax notices, assessment review board notices, and other notices, documents or information by electronic means under parts nine, 10, and 11 of the Act. These parts include assessment of property, taxation, and assessment review boards. This bylaw would bring the town into legal compliance as well as provide benefits to both the town staff and residents in the community. The town would reap the benefits to the cost savings for printing and mailing of these notices. It would also be more efficient for staff during tax season, as they generally receive numerous requests for reprints during this time. This process would also provide flexibility for residents who wish to receive these notices electronically. Should council choose to give first reading to bylaw 4580-2020, administration will advertise the bylaw as required and return to a future meeting. Does anyone have any questions?
Doesn't look like it again, I think just pretty straightforward, just kind of catching up with the times. So, thanks very much for that, Emma. So seeing no questions, I would ask councillor Moore to, for council to give first reading to bylaw 4580-2020, being the electronic communications bylaw, and that council direct administration to advertise the electronic communications bylaw for two weeks in their Harper Times, Town Crier, and social media, as well as to publish a copy of the proposed bylaw on the town website.
I will so move.
Thank you. A vote for everyone? Perfect, thank you. Land sale repealing bylaw, is that Emma again?
That's me again. It's the me show today. Okay, I'm here to present the proposed bylaw 4584-2020, being the land sale repealing bylaw for the years 1938 to 1950. Administration has conducted a thorough review between the years of 1938 and 1950. We have determined that the active land sale, land sale bylaws from this period are deemed to be inoperative, obsolete, expired, spent, or otherwise ineffective and irrelevant to town business. Land sales are now conducted through agreements, though rescinding these bylaws, rendering these bylaws unnecessary. Rescinding these bylaws will have no effect on the ownership of these properties. Therefore, administration recommends that council give first and second reading, unanimous consent, and third reading to bylaw 4584-2020, being the land sale repealing bylaw. Are there any questions?
Councillor McMillan?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Kui, and thank you very much, Emma, and I have to make a very poor pun, because I was just thinking that it's like we're the Grady bunch today. Just a couple of comments. One, I found it really fascinating that back in 1929, you could buy two lots for $10, so I found that fascinating. And that there were quite a few female land moguls in town as well, so I thought that was interesting. But my main question is, does the museum have copies of all of this documentation? Because it is rather historically rich.
I'm not sure, we do have to keep them like indefinitely, I do know that, but I guess I could look into if the museum does, or if we could get copies to them. Because yeah, I've gone through all the bylaws from the start, and we have some that are very, very old, but very interesting.
Well, they are, and I thought the museum would really appreciate them for their archives, because it's, it was quite a little fascinating read, actually, so.
Oh, yes.
And thank you for all the work you do.
Oh, no problem, thank you.
Yeah, I echo that, Carol, or councillor McMillan, this has been a huge task, this bylaw cleaning up, and I know that it isn't over yet, so. This is a lengthy one, but maybe councillor Mastman, if you wouldn't mind. As of section seven of the MGA, as amended, provides council with the authority to pass bylaws for municipal purpose, whereas amended empowers a council of the municipality to pass a bylaw which omits or provides the repeal of bylaw provision of the bylaw that is inoperative, obsolete, expired, spent, or otherwise ineffective. And whereas administration has conducted a thorough review of all active bylaws in order to repeal any bylaws deemed to be ineffective to town business. Be it resolved that council give first reading to the bylaw 4584-2020, land sale repeal.
So I'd be happy to make that motion, Deputy Mayor Kui, as long as I don't have to repeat all that.
Absolutely not. And the vote by consensus? And if councillor Moore could please give, that council give second reading to bylaw 4584-2020, lay it land sale repealing.
I am so moved, Deputy Mayor Kui.
Thank you. And again, I see no hands, so we'll continue on and ask councillor Kinghorn, all council present give unanimous consent to proceed with third and final reading of bylaw 4584-2020, land sale repealing.
I will give you that motion.
And finally, we'll get everybody in on this one almost, councillor Nychik, that council give third and final reading to bylaw 4584-2020, land sale and repealing.
Thanks for stating it, and I'll give you that motion.
Perfect, thank you. Next, we have first reading for Good Neighbor bylaw, and I believe that's Jessica.
It is, good afternoon, deputy mayor and council. I'm here today to present the first reading of the draft Good Neighbor bylaw. The purpose of this report is to provide council with a brief overview of the draft bylaw in preparation for first reading of the Good Neighbor bylaw 4579/2020. For the past several years, administration has been working to update some of the town's most frequently used bylaws. The work we have completed to draft the Good Neighbor bylaw intends to do a few things: to align the bylaw with current best practice, to address any gaps in the regulations, update wording and terminology, increase the accessibility of the bylaw, and consolidate similar themes into one bylaw. A first reading draft Good Neighbor bylaw is included in the package for this report. Three bylaws which are currently in force have been consolidated into this new bylaw: the noise bylaw, the snow and ice control bylaw, and the nuisance and unsightly premises bylaw. A few new components have been added to the first reading draft Good Neighbor bylaw. These new components include regulations for flyers, litter, and donation bins. It includes graffiti in the definition of a nuisance, and it includes an exception for specific rural type properties which are inside High River's municipal boundaries. Additionally, several components of the first reading draft bylaw have been updated when compared to the current bylaws. Some of these changes or updates include clarification of certain definitions, one consistent timeframe for quiet across town, an exception to the noise restrictions for snow and ice clearing purposes, inclusion of a visual guide for sidewalk snow and ice clearing regulations, and the enforcement section now points to relevant legislation rather than restating that legislation within our bylaw. Council may have noticed there are two copies for the first reading draft bylaw in the agenda package. One is a clean copy, and the other is a marked up copy, which contains notes of new contents or items that are noteworthy in some way. Administration intends to remove the comment bubbles for subsequent presentations to council. Should council choose to give first reading to the draft bylaw, administration will public a scheduled hearing for a future council meeting. Are there any questions?
I think we, oh, councillor McMillan, sorry.
That's okay, I've been using my electronic hand, but I'll use my physical one if that's better. Thank you very much, Jessica. One question I have, just so I can get in my head, is on page, I guess it's nine of your report, it's on page 120 of the whole package, but part three under snow clearing number 22A, serve the owner or occupant with remedial order subject to section 45. What exactly does remedial order entail? Because I was just thinking about, seeing it's the Good Neighbor bylaw, what about a verbal, like as a step one instead of a remedial order? So I just would like some clarification, please.
So my understanding, Peter is the expert on remedial orders and all things bylaw legislation, but in his place, as he's away today, my understanding is that we would start certainly with education first, and a request to clear this note first. These are steps that may occur if those actions are not taken in a timely manner. That's my current understanding.
Perfect, thank you, because I just thought it was a bit harsh to right away if someone hadn't cleared, because there could be many reasons why, right? And then if they were right away getting a remedial order, so thank you.
My pleasure. It's important to note too that a remedial order can take several weeks as far as the timeline goes, so that's outside of the timeline that we would want for snow and ice clearing from a sidewalk.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Nychik? Oh, you're muted, councillor Nychik.
Technical difficulties. Thanks, Deputy Mayor, just, just a point of clarification under definitions, under section three, I think it is, GG number four. There's no such thing as a soccer flat, it's a soccer pitch. I know it's a minor clarification, but a soccer field isn't referred to as a flat, it's referred to as a pitch, P-I-T-C-H. Thank you.
Thank you. No further questions? I think we've, we've had the opportunity to talk fairly extensively about this, and I think look forward to the public input as we move forward. So I will last for the resolution, councillor McMillan, if you wouldn't mind, whereas amended sorry, administration wishes to consolidate a number of these bylaws into one regulation, be it resolved that council give first reading to bylaw 4579-2020, the Good Neighbor bylaw being the bylaw to promote courteous and responsible behavior in the community.
I'm happy to give you that motion.
Perfect, and council, we need to have a look here and make sure everyone's good with that. And councillor Kinghorn, if you would please, and that we direct council, council direct administration to schedule a public hearing for the Good Neighbor bylaw on October 13th, 2020.
So moved.
Everyone in agreement? Perfect. Jessica, are you also leading the discussion on animal bylaw amendment ideas?
I am.
Perfect.
Thank you. So during the September 14th, 2020 regular meeting of council, a delegation from the Calgary Pigeon Racing Club provided a detailed presentation about the sport of pigeon racing. Based on the presentation, council requested that administration return with potential alternatives for regulating pigeon ownership in High River. The purpose of this report today is twofold. Firstly, for council to discuss potential methods for regulating pigeon ownership in High River. And secondly, for administration to receive direction from council on regulations to include an amending bylaw that would change the current animal bylaw. In preparation for this report, for council's consideration and direction, administration reviewed the bylaws for 33 municipalities in Alberta. Through this comparison, we found that 42.4% did not directly mention pigeons in their bylaw, 30.3% permitted pigeons with specific regulations, and 27.3% prohibited pigeons. The municipalities that permitted pigeons used specific regulations for pigeon ownership. These regulations included flock size restrictions, setbacks from the edge of the owner's property for placing lofts, minimum lot size requirements, land use zoning, or the use of animal units. The relevant sections of various municipal bylaws have been included for information as part of this report package. Additional measures could be included in the regulation, such as a requirement for licensing, a letter to inform neighbors, restrictions delineating the months and times of day when pigeons can be exercised outside, and how many birds may be exercised at one time. The Calgary Pigeon Racing Club presented on October 14th, or on September 14th, they highlighted pigeon racing as a sport which is a hobby for some, but could be a side business for others. Within the regulations being contemplated today, council may wish to consider the distinctions that might differentiate an animal-related hobby from an animal-related business. There are pros and cons to any alternative, and it is possible that administration has not discovered or considered all potential unintended consequences of drafting and amending bylaw at this time. With all of this in mind, how does council wish to regulate pigeons in High River?
And I think maybe, maybe just for a point of clarification, this, this conversation is back on the table. I think after our presentation last week, council felt maybe our initial conversation or discussions about this maybe wasn't done with all of the information and felt in fairness to come back to revisit this based on having that information and how we might go forward. So let's start with councillor Mastman.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Kui, so I, yeah, I've got a few concerns about this, and the whole thing about, you know, council deciding whether something is a business or a hobby, you know, without access to Revenue Canada records, you know, makes that a very difficult determination. So I would, I would support this only if the amending bylaw was given the same level of public engagement and a public hearing as the original one was. Just as the pigeon supporters said they didn't know about the public engagement process and the public hearing, which is why they didn't have any input into it, into the original bylaw, perhaps there might be some residents who, who oppose pigeons, who also didn't know and should be given the opportunity. So far, we've heard officially from only one pigeon protester, Brenda Benson, both before the vote on the original bylaw and, and since the presentation by Nasser Taker of the Calgary Pigeon Racing Club at our last meeting. Brenda made a lot of points, some based on opinion, others based on, on her research about pigeon behavior and the public health hazards that, that they pose. So before I make any decision, I'd like administration to give us an unbiased report covering the points that both Brenda and Nasser raised in the last couple of weeks. I don't think we should do anything based on the presentation by one pigeon racing association, or even by the opposition of one resident. In, in his notes, Chris Prosser, the CAO, says to us that we could, we have a few options here, we could allow licensed and registered racing pigeons, provided they follow our regulations concerning limits on flock size, limits on loft size, setbacks from adjacent properties, and to be a member in good standing. I guess I'm wondering, who's, who's going to check all that? Who's going to enforce all that? How, how are we going to determine how many pigeons there are in High River? Who's going to count them? Last meeting, we were told by Nasser, who was very well spoken, that there are eight or nine members of just his club in High River with 20 to 30 birds in each loft. That's an estimated 270 birds right there. How many local members do we have that are members of other clubs? Nasser did point out that his is only one of several clubs. How many birds do we have in total? Are there pigeons being kept for other than racing purposes, perhaps human consumption? How much is it going to cost the town to gather all this information? Do we even want all this information? But frankly, I need to know a little bit more about all this before I can make any kind of decision on this. I really appreciate your time, thanks.
Thank you.
There wasn't really a direct question in there, so was there Bruce? There was nothing specific for Jessica, right?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, Deputy Mayor Kui, it was just my little rant.
Nope, all good information. I believe councillor Kinghorn was up next.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I do have a specific question, and number five, it talks about use of animal units. What, what, what is that, Jessica? Can you tell me? And then I'll speak to the, the overall discussion here after that.
Absolutely. So one of the attachments to the report is a document that Emma and I pulled together on uses, different ways that different municipalities talk about pigeons and animals within their limits. And I'm not sure what page it's on, but looks a little bit like this on your agenda. The county has a use of animal units, so they declare a certain number of chickens is one animal unit, a certain number of cows, a certain number of goats, and that works well for the county because they have some country residential parcels that are relatively small, they have some sort of medium sized parcels, and then some very large parcels. And so it's a way for them to regulate and make sure that the number of animals that are on a specific property don't exceed the ability of that property to safely and humanely house and care for those animals. So for example, High River has taken the approach of restricting to up to three chickens per residential property, or up to two apiaries of bees on a residential property. So if the town was to take that kind of an approach, we could look at and consider what might we consider to be an animal unit? And how might we wish to regulate the number of units, specific units, per plot and other potential ideas? Does that clarify for you, councillor Kinghorn?
Yeah, I think so. So like an animal unit is six cows and two chickens, that would mean you had two animal units in their property, right? That kind of thing? Okay, fair enough. So what do we, are we just discussing this, or are we looking for a decision here today on this particular bylaw? Can you answer me that?
So the piece that administration is looking for is direction on next steps. Do we, should we go back and do a substantial more amount of engagement? Should we research? Should we draft an amending bylaw? What would council like to see from administration next with regard to pigeons? And with regard to the new information been shared with council at this time?
Okay, so I guess from my perspective, I've driven the neighborhood where we've received a lot of complaints, and I'm not an expert on what pigeon coops look like, but I counted what appeared to be about eight of these pigeon coops in a very, very small area. In fact, it was within one block. I would like to see administration go back and do some more research and come back to us, but one of the things I'd be focused on is not only the density of the individual property, but the density of the area. If we were to say in that particular area, each place is allowed to have 10 birds, we could have 80 birds in a hurry in that one little one block area. I don't know if there's any way, like for example with dogs, I don't know if there's any way we can control how many are in a given geographic area with multiple landowners. So that would be something I'd be looking for, is how many birds are we expecting in, in a given geographic area? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next was councillor Moore.
Yep, thank you, Deputy Mayor Kui, and thank you, Jessica, for all of your knowledge and report. I tend to totally agree with councillor Mastman on his point. I know that it was a very well-informed and well-done presentation by Nasser last week, but it had some little, little bit of doubts about the material that was presented, especially when they said that they didn't really know how many members of their club were in High River. They thought, well, it would be eight or nine, but no. Think that a, a club that was controlling the pigeons, et cetera, would be a little bit more accurate in their, and when I asked the other fellow about how many pigeons he had, he was evasive as well in saying that a number of his babies had not returned to the coop or to the loft. or to the loft. So I just had a little bit of doubt about their earlier claims about that they had very strict control of their pigeons and he didn't know where these were, where they, why they didn't return and where they were. So it was kind of contradictory about their strict, strict control. So I just have had a few doubts about whether it was effective that they're, they're not allowed out except for raising. So with all of the points that Counselor Masterman brought up, I'm totally in agreement with that.
Thank you. Thank you Counselor Moore. Counselor McMillan?
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor and thank you Jessica. Just a couple of comments. Thank you Deputy Mayor for clarifying why we're discussing this again, because for me, it's very integral that people realize that council makes decisions based on the information that we are given at that particular time. So I'm glad that we are reviewing this because we hadn't had both sides of the story. I agree with Counselor Masterman that, and I guess this is where I just want some M G A clarification. With an amending bylaw, I'm presuming it does require a public hearing. Is that correct? Or not?
That is correct.
Okay. Because I do think that if we're considering amending this, we do need public engagement, the public hearing for sure, because then people can definitely have their insights recorded and encourage people to get out. At where I sit with this is I think if we do amend the bylaw, I think it's important for restrictions to be in place because you know, I've been paying attention to the pigeons around town and I've yet to see ones with bands on their legs. There's a bunch around C I B C and they're all unbanded. So I mean, on one hand, it's very hard. I don't know how we can control pigeons because there's going to be natural pigeons and then these racing ones. So I think that restrictions such as having racing ones and controlled amounts are useful. I like the idea of the animal units per se, but I just think that it does need some regulations. And then ironically, because I was looking at my own deck the other day, and we don't have pigeons flying around, but we have a lot of those ring-necked doves and magpies. And I mean, our deck has lots of excrement from birds and whatnot. So I wasn't always seeing, I was happy to see in the Good Neighbor bylaw that there is that part is handled there as that people could make a complaint if they've got a lot of pigeon poop around their house. But what impressed me about Nasser's presentation is the fact that I was at least through what their presentation is. Apparently, they do clean up the excrement and use it as, you know, compost, whatever. But where was I going with this? Sorry, I feel a little bit roundly, but I just think that we, we have to see both sides of the story and have, I think it could be successful if there's proper restrictions in place. Because, oh, this is where I was going. I was thinking the other day about how many off-leash dogs there are still. It doesn't matter how much legislation. There's still a lot of off-leash dogs that provide a little bit of danger on the pathways. So I just think I'm commending you Jessica for dealing with all these shades of gray. This is the point I'm trying to make. So thank you for your time and due diligence, but I totally support Counselor Masterman with having more information in a public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you Counselor McMillan. Counselor Nychik?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Kui. To Jessica, out of these thirty point three percent that permitted pigeons with certain regulations, did we contact any of them directly just to have a conversation and ask them how the bylaw was working? And if so, was there any that stood out? Because there's, i- i- in reading those bylaws that you included in the package, thank you very much for that. There is differing levels of controls that were put in. You know, specifically like Edmonton had certain flight times. They wouldn't allow them to fly on weekends and basically early mornings or late evenings for it. So varying differences. And I wonder if we got any input from their administrative teams on, on how effective these were, how they handled the situations that you know, somebody that likes to be a pigeon fancier can, can express and practice their interest and the neighbor next door can live in peace without feces all over their property. Just kind of looking if there was one that stood out really is the question. Thank you.
Thank you. We have not yet directly spoken with the municipalities that do permit pigeons. However, I can see that that would be a very useful beneficial thing to do as part of the next steps of research.
And last point, I'm, I'm with Counselor Masterman as well, like, you know, for this to come back as a public hearing and, and to have some, some more discussion. I, I am somewhat concerned about the amount of time we're spending on a pigeon, but this, this all costs time and, and money and we're, yeah, it's, I'll just stop there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you Counselor Nychik. And I'm, I'm kind of of the same mindset as, as most of you there. I, I think if it hadn't have been the weekend, I would have been tempted to contact some of these municipalities to, to get their feedback from bylaw services and public health services about their, about how they work. I think for me to also consider it and, and is, we need, we need more information. I need more information. I think we need a little more public input. I would like to see us go farther that the town of High River has a license for anyone so that, you know, they're having to come in and prove their good standing and, and, and some other things. So we know who they are and without that license, then we also have more recourse. I would also like to ensure that we have a, a means for recourse in that bylaw. If we get complaints by neighbors that, you know, they might still beat all the other criteria, but if they aren't being good neighbors, we have recourse to get rid of those birds. And I, and I appreciate Counselor Nychik's opinion or, or opinion about the amount of money we're spending on this. And so I think it sounds to me like there is appetite to further, get further information on this. If that's not the case, please raise your hand. But I think that's the direction we're going. I see there's another question. Counselor Kinghorn, put his hand down.
Sorry, sorry. No, sorry. I guess I was a little bit ahead of this. Regardless, the, we have a bylaw in place today that, that has controls over the pigeons. Going forward, while the administration is doing their work and, and it sounds like everybody would like to see more information, me included. Does that bylaw then stay in place and, and how are we going to deal with this issue?
Great question, Jamie.
Deputy Mayor Kui, I can answer that. So basically for the, since the last meeting, we kind of put a stay on having any birds or any further enforcement until we got to this point and this determining whether council wanted to proceed with more information or no, what we have in the bylaw is fine. We, we started enforcing right away. I would suggest if council is of the appetite to ask for more information, that we actually not enforce any further unless there's a tangible complaint of increased nuisance within that specific property. And so that would be, you know, not, not following good codes of conduct of, of flight overs of pigeons, increased excrement on, on private property, those types of things. If council is going to go for more information and actually going to consider taking forward a bylaw to a public hearing or further engagement. If we're going to stop it now, we would start enforcement tomorrow.
Thank you. Chris, Counselor Masterman?
Oh, thank you Deputy Mayor Kui. So yeah, I mean, I, I, as I said before, I'd really like to see some more information and, 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 and it, it is, it is definitely concerning, you know, how much time and effort we're putting into pigeons, but we also know they're, they're very important to people in town and on both sides of it. So I think I, you know, about the only thing I really wanted to say was that I would really hope that the people of High River who feel strongly either way about this would let us know what they think, you know, even prior to, you know, any kind of hearing that we might have. All our email addresses are on the Town of High River website and, and, and any of us phone numbers as well, but emails are great because then we can, we can pass them on to other, to the administration and also to fellow counselors. So so I'd really urge people to let us know, you know, because if we're making too big a thing out of this and then we should know about it and, and if we're not being vigilant enough, I want to know that too. So, so thanks so much.
Thanks Counselor Masterman. Jessica, do you have enough information to go forward? I see no further questions.
So for clarification for my own purposes, two of the things that were said are somewhat contradictory. One piece was a request to have the same level of engagement as we had with the previous bylaw. So the previous engagement that we conducted was six weeks. It was online and in-person at pop-up events. It was all over our social media feeds, our website. We really went out there and, and worked for the five hundred and seventy-seven responses we did receive. So that would be slightly different than conducting a bunch more research, drafting and amending bylaw and then having a public hearing or that draft amending bylaw. So if I get to get some clarification on the research, engagement, public hearing, a bit of a disconnect for me, please?
Fair enough. Counselor Masterman, I'll let you start.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Kui. Yeah, Jessica, I'm sorry about that. I, I, I may have, I've never done this before in my life. I may have overstated a little bit the same level of engagement, you know, do I, you know, we, we, many of us have talked about how much time and effort and staff time this has taken and council time this has taken. And no, I don't expect personally, and maybe I might be in the minority on council, I don't expect staffers to go to various pop-up events and, and revisit pigeons. You know, but I, but I definitely would like to see some kind of engagement, you know, and, you know, through social media, through the crier, through, and, and definitely we can help with that as well, different counselors who are on social media. But, but yeah, I, I may have overstated it when I said, you know, the same level of, of public engagement from the, of the original bylaw.
Thank you, Counselor. I think in fairness to Jessica, if we are looking for some more research that would go into a draft bylaw, that would then come forward and we would have a public hearing which would include social media and all of that. So I suspect that's probably the, the stream that we are looking at. Everyone's agreement?
If I may Deputy Mayor, the, that research, it sounds like should also include some targeted engagement of various pigeon clubs and also of other municipalities with pigeon-related bylaws that permit pigeons within their boundaries and others within the community. Would that be fair?
I, I think, and by my mind, I think other municipalities for sure. I guess other clubs, if we feel that information is warranted. Anyone else want to chime in on that? Dawn? Counselor Moore?
Yes, I think, I think we need that body of information and it should come back to council. And then we can decide on what the actual amendment to the bylaw will be. And then we put that forward for a public hearing. And that's where we get our feedback.
Does that, Chris, Jessica, do you think that might work?
I will defer to Chris.
Yes, I think that, that will work. The intent would be to bring back some sample, a sample bylaw to the next committee of the whole meeting for conversation to make sure that we're on tar- target based upon the input that we get from the other municipalities. Reaching out to the other pigeon associations, we may not get any tangible feedback besides the fact that they love having them. And so what we're trying to find is there, is there a way to be, have the community and the neighbors satisfied with hosting pigeons or raising pigeons adjacent to them or not? And what those regulations may be. And I think if we can put that together and have that conversation, the committee of the whole meeting with council, and then we can finalize what the amending bylaw would look like and bring that forward for public, public hearing with an open public engagement process prior to that where people can provide just feedback online by emails to a centralized address would be fine.
I think that sounds like a good plan to go forward. See no further questions. I assume you're good. Jess, any more questions for me, Jessica?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Deputy Mayor Kui, I just have one question. It goes back to the enforcement side of things. Are we going to have council support to continue not enforcing the bylaw until we have the amendment to a council meeting? Or do we want to proceed with some enforcement action?
My, I'll start. I don't see any hands up. I'm going to say to go forward with that, but if there are complaints, I think we do need to respond to that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody. So we received a letter from Cerebral Palsy asking us to proclaim October sixth, World Cerebral Palsy Day. Is everyone in agreement with asking Mayor Snodgrass to make that proclamation? If so, I assume, Emma, we need a motion for that? Chris, whoever?
Yes, yes, we would. Sorry.
Excellent. Counselor McMillan, would you give us that motion that we proclaim October sixth, twenty twenty, World Cerebral Palsy Day?
I'll give you that motion.
Thank you. Awesome. And we just have some other correspondence for council's information. I guess it looks like that wraps up our meeting. So I ask for the regular meeting of council for September twenty eighth, twenty twenty, be adjourned at three forty-eight by Counselor Moore. I don't think I need to do that, do I?
No.
No, you don't, but you can do it yourself, but it has to be adjourned. So I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you Counselor Moore. Thank you, everybody who's out there listening and everyone else for their time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you all today.
Yes, six months.
Yeah.